Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Portugal, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, copies of draft meeting minutes for August 21st, Captain DeWitt council members, and also, and also, copy of the city treasurer's report as of August 31st. Bill of action. Oh, look at the minutes here, Paul. The various committee reports are on all of these details. Communication. We have a letter from the public county planning board stating that there would be no significant county-wide or inter-community impacts associated with the adopt- the adopted code of law, number five, December 18th, which will then be in the city's own law respecting issues in the Archie, Archie page, the zoning district. The county planning board also offers some comments for the council's consideration. Resolutions. First, appointing Commissioner Deeds. Can I have an introduction and a second? That's going to be harder. Introduction?
Tiffany.
Oh, okay. Michelle McConnell, Captain Deo, and she was-
No, I meant, I thought you said it'd be hard to say your name.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So, do I have a-
Tiffany.
Tiffany, and a second. Do you want me? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a consultant agreement with Strong Outcomes LLC for services to be provided to the CDAC. This is, has to do with the inventory, the open space natural resources inventory that the CDAC is working on. This money's already been approved, this is just for them to use some of the money to write up the final result. Can I have an introduction and a second? You?
Sorry, who was that?
Rich, yeah. First and a second.
Heidi.
Heidi, thank you. I promise you we'll arrange tables. This is a third resolution authorizes the chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Hudson City School District. As you know, we've been in touch with the police about implementing the Handle With Care initiative, excuse me. And this, the chief needs a memo, a MOU with the school district to allow this to proceed.
So, the training, explaining what handle with care means, what is this?
This is a program-
Is this a program?
Oh.
Yeah. Tell us a little bit more about it.
Sure. Basically, what this is, is an initiative out of West Virginia that we wanted to bring to the city to deal with some of our youth that are experiencing trauma from police presence. So, basically, what this does is, any youth that's near a trauma situation, it could be a raid, it could be a car accident, anything involving an officer, they would send a memo to the school district to say this youth has suffered some kind of trauma and handle that with care. Because we were seeing a lot of behavioral difficulties and a lot of times, there's a room to that situation.
That's a little bit, that's a good, because that way, it's not exposing the child as far as, you know, putting the business out there, but it's giving the people in the district or the schools a certain type of sensitivity towards what that child may be going through. And you said this was out of Virginia?
Yes. Yeah, and this is in a partnership along with the sheriff's office as well.
Okay. So, quick question. With the MOU, does it explain in here like how the school will attend to that child?
Yeah, we met with Maria Setmire, and there's going to be an email or a call that's going to go out each time there's a situation, and then she's going to filter that information down once she has the student's name, sort of which correct building and how they go on it. So, sometimes it's just about being aware, you know, the situation happens, and it could be like, student is acting out, or student is, you know, very quiet, so this just is keeping an extra eye on that student, and if there is something that comes up, being able to give them the support that they need in that situation.
One last question. And I like that you did this, this is very good, being that the concerns coming out from the past rates in the state. I wanted to know also, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. All right, so, are you going to keep track of this and follow this till, say, for instance, it happened to be another raid, and you see through pictures on the media that there were some children involved, are you going to keep in contact with the school to make sure that the children that we, the public see that is involved is being handled with care?
Yeah.
So, that there's nothing that comes out of it where the child says, "No, they told everybody in the school," you know what I mean?
Yeah, we were-
You just keep the council updated?
Yeah, quarterly meetings, and I'll update the council after the meetings. Right now, we're looking at a year pilot with just Hudson City School District, and then after that, we're looking to go countywide.
Good, thank you.
Do I have an introduction and a second?
Tiffany.
Tiffany, come on. Fourth resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for engineering services. This is just to extend the contract of an existing grant writer?
Which resolution are you on?
Number four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for engineering services.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So, this $30,000 acts like a ceiling, correct? Because when I look at the budget, like, year-to-date, we spent $7,000 for grant writing last year, it was like $17,000. So, is this like the maximum that we're allocating?
Mayor, would you like to speak to that?
That's correct, yes, that's correct. And you should, I don't know if it's coming through on this month's bills, but you'll see additional bills for additional services.
Thank you.
And why are we increasing it?
We're not increasing anything, we're adding another year. We hired them for a year, and we're hiring them, I'm often suggesting we hire them for another year, and give them one more year to see how they function. We didn't utilize them as aggressively as we thought we would, predominantly because of the DRI, but I hope next year that we do more requests for grants from them.
Introduction?
Rob.
Rob, second.
You said, it says the contract shall, amount shall be increased by $30,000, and you're saying it's not big?
It's just extending it from the writing, you're saying, but it's keeping it in place. They still have to build, if we enact.
We, yeah, so, through July 1st of 2010, so that includes the next grant writing season of next year?
Yes.
You'll send us that, Jim. Rob and Rich. The next is a resolution to compensate an organ of the district of cities, finance committee event awards. This is a later application, $800 to Bynos, just family service. They do a great program. Do I have an introduction and a second?
I'll say it.
No? I'll read it. The next resolution authorizes the mayor- authorizing the mayor to obtain appraisals on real property owned by the city and authorize to transfer funds to cover the costs associated with the appraisals. Of course, this is all related to trying to figure out what to do with all the buildings, and what they're worth. In this case, we're looking at the fair market value and the square footage of this Hudson City Hall, Hudson Youth Department Building, and the Hudson Daycare Center. Number first?
Second.
Oh, sure. Tiffany?
Second?
Please, please.
First? Tom.
So, I'm sorry, we're here, so this is the feasibility study, right? Yes. So, after this feasibility study comes back to us, right? What does this, wait, wait, you're, oh, this is not the feasibility study, this is just appraisal. You're reading the first section, it says-
An appraisal.
Right, this is an appraisal. This is, gotcha, this is to feed, to contribute to the feasibility. Oh, okay. I mean, right, as a feasibility, like, do we have spoken of feasibility? This is just a appraisal.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Because that's actually what the county is doing right now as well. And lastly, a resolution to stop money set aside as part of the 2015 budget process for compensation committee. To administer salary increases. Let me say a couple things in behalf of this. $50,000 was set aside by Tiffany Hamilton last year, but never designated for salary increases to the city clerk, the code enforcement officer, and the city treasurer. Now, on the city treasurer's, let me give you the rationale for all three increases first. The city treasurer has had all, has had a number of new responsibilities, including administering the lodging tax and the recently passed Intertight New York Benefit Finance Program. Heather didn't want us to really include this, because she, you know, the elected official and thought it should come up after she's coming up for office herself, or not at the same time while she's in office. However, the mayor and I thought that because it was already designated in last year's budget, it was a fair and just increase. Now, the city clerk has taken over the whole parking bureau administrative functions, and that's sort of one of the justifications for her relatively modest increase. And lastly, the code enforcement officer now has new responsibilities, excuse me, including fire inspections, and once the vacancy law is passed, he'll be the enforcement mechanism for the vacancy law. So, the mayor and I do recommend these salary increases. Any questions?
I think it's a lot of money. Who came up with the amount of the increase?
The city compensation board, which was composed of a number of people. The amounts were all sort of based on a number of metrics. The main thing is that this was in the budget, from last year's budget. Now, why they didn't-
How come it didn't pass it?
It was passed in the budget.
Okay, so?
The money's there.
The money was there, but it wasn't-
It wasn't allocated to these, to these three positions.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to understand it, because I know the treasurer's office has a staff, and the city clerk has a staff, you know, but I, I don't know, I don't know what to pick about.
Rick, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Last year's budget process with the previous mayor, I wasn't that involved, I think Tom and I were peripherally kind of, had an idea, but not really. They set aside $50,000 for very specific raises, for the treasurer, for the city clerk, and for the code enforcement officer. They all were part of the request, they all thought they were, they were needed, and they all were approved. Why they didn't pull, trigger that last year, I don't know on these. But they said they'd be part of a compensation committee to be formed, and that compensation committee would approve the raises, and anything else that came along. So, we sat down, we had three different meetings, we went over each person, what they were, what they asked for last year, and what they're currently doing, as Tom mentioned. All three have current responsibilities, new responsibilities. The treasurer had not been given a raise. If she had been given a raise historically, consistently throughout the years, she'd probably be close to $80,000. She asked, very, you know, she was, she's embarrassed this is going on, she asked that wait until, as Tom said, until next year's budget, or she'll pass on it. I think, I think they all three are merited personally. Craig has taken on a lot of responsibility, if you look at his salary, yeah, they have help, but they, you know, they, they need probably more help. Tracy's taken on the parking bureau, it's, the city's changed a lot, I'm sorry. So, I mean, it should have been lower than last year. If you recall, last year, they changed the mayor's salary from $45,000 to $60,000, but there was a history behind that, where it had been $60,000 for years before we got into pensions back and forth. There were some pensions issues, I believe, with the treasurer's salary as well. So, you know, we've all talked about it, we agreed, we think it's fair, we'll be looking at next year's salaries, you know, per hour being changed, it's just time to be as fair as we possibly can, everybody deserves it, without breaking the bank. And this money was specifically put aside for this reason. So, it's in your budget, it was approved in your budgets for this year.
I think we probably will need, assuming this one passes, we'll need a resolution to move the money out of contingency to each of the point one accounts where it'll be paid.
I don't, do you think so?
It's just mechanics, yeah. I don't think-
Yeah, you're more familiar with it.
Yeah, I don't think you can pay a salary out of contingency.
Is it a contingency fund?
That's what it says, yeah. Maybe that has changed, but, you know.
Okay. Richard?
Yeah, I would just like to say that in the past nine months of being on this council, all three of these people have been totally amazing, never had a question, whenever I sent an email, I mean, the amount of research work that Tracy will do to find out the information, to go back, to look into old files. Heather has been really helpful with any question, and on the finance committee, and we are so lucky to have her as treasurer, because she's super smart, she knows what she's doing, we're really lucky to have Heather as treasurer. And Craig on code enforcement, he's a great guy, and, you know, he just, he averaged him on this grant, and this silver medal grant, and he's been amazing, and, you know, you have to learn to work with each person, but all three are really quite amazing, and we're really all lucky to have them as, okay, on the city, on the city.
Any other council questions?
Yeah, who is on this compensation committee?
All department heads, BEA department, department heads. Any other council questions? Public?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I don't really know, all these people have been great good service to me, and are all very accessible. I know most of that clerk, I've worked very closely with Tracy for years, and I've seen her take on more and more responsibilities that a staff cannot take on. And I remember she became the records access officer, and that was a headache, and I added to her headache regularly, and she didn't get any extra credit for that. So, she's, she gives great service, and she's got a lot of responsibilities, and the other two officers, good service.
Thank you.
I'm a physical conservative, I forgot to say that.
I was curious who was responsible for the lodging tax enforcement?
Well, Craig is the enforcement, Heather has to block it all and draw on that accounting aspect, so it's correct. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Don Moore. I will, I agree with everything that's been said here about these three individuals, and I would point out that one of the, one of my most important factors about city government is experience, and you have good people, as you do with all three of these people, it is imperative that you retain. I pay, and pay it ways that is commensurate with their experience and their ability within this particular region, and I think all three of these salaries are well within that. So, I'd ask a question about the traffic bureau. I mean, I would assume that the traffic office is no longer a staffed, and that Tracy's, that Tracy's salary would somehow be offset by the absence of that person in the office, if I'm correct about how the staffing patterns work.
She has a new director for, that she did not have previously.
Okay.
And so, we split it up, the police, the actual police are working with the traffic enforcement officers, but Tracy's has a new staff person that oversees the collection of money and all that. And that is a brand new report, too, Tracy.
At the salary level that the previous director of the office had?
For the parking enforcement, yes.
All right, thank you. Yes?
So, what would-
Turn yourself, please.
Oh, my name is Rebecca Flora.
How are you doing?
Alamoan Jacob Parkway, I'm thirty-four. So, what would the salary be, like, what's the number for these three people? Is that relevant here?
It's in the, it's in the resolution, yeah. The city treasurer could be increased to $75,000, the city clerk to $75,000, and the city code enforcement to $55,000.
So, it's not like an even split, split over $50,000, and this was-
No, this doesn't even, this doesn't use the entire $50.
So, what happens with the rest of that money?
Would you?
Better see it somewhere else.
Now that I'm going to rest it. Comes back into the general fund?
Well, that does bring up the real question that I actually had, which was, how about housing commissioner? Or, yeah, or coordinator?
That's a conversation, you can have, not open the new business later, but it's, it's possible. There's a number of ways of, we've been thinking about how to finance a housing advocate, commissioner, whatever you're gonna, we're gonna call it, but I think the HCDPA might be the proper mechanism for that, given their, what they may have in hand, and what they're willing to do. But I think it's possible, since it is a city agency, you know, everybody on it pretty much is, almost all those elected people, so it's a possibility. And it's, you know, one of the key features of the housing task force, a put you apart. So, it's definitely on the table, it's definitely something we're trying to fund and figure out how to find. Yes?
I would just echo what Don said, I think it makes sense that you have good people, you should hand them what they bring into value to keep them around, and I guess I would also extend that logic, you know, to city tires, sort of city staff, and, and I just look at these three right now, but I think we should, we should keep in mind sort of other departments that-
Council president, for example. So, any more questions? Oh, don't worry.
Yeah, just one of the things that, as I've been looking at with Rick and everything, with the ADA coordinator, is most, a lot of other municipalities that have adopted the ADA coordinator, they utilize their code enforcement. So, this might be, you know, another task that we can hopefully put onto the code enforcement, and this will work hand in hand, create some sidewalk issues in the face of that, and also as another part of the incentive, you know, getting that designation, so maybe that might be something that could be also.
Okay, do I have an introduction and a second? Rich and I. Okay, we still have four laws on your desk. Which we will, yeah, which we can possibly go on our next meeting. So, that's the official business. Anything the council would like to bring up? Old first?
There has been a request from certain peoples that have noticed the vending machine outside of city hall, and it's just a simple request to put a sign on what it is. Some people were like, "What is this?" They just want, they just want to sign this in the city dress tag.
I will make a note of Rob Perry, I'm sure he'll, he can be there, can cover the county's signs. Oh, okay. So, can you just cover, cover the county's signs, they're like $30, he turns his number around and they're just, well, that's all you just do, so, so, you know, they'll- I wonder, is it, is the instructions pretty clear, or is it?
They'll design it for you, so if we-
So, and the instructions currently on there, are there instructions?
Oh, there's nothing, there's-
There's nothing there.
I mean, it really only accuses people from not intending.
Yeah, I know.
Are you ready?
We do like people that move into town and they don't know what it is.
It's an amazing opportunity. I walked into the city hall on afternoon this summer, and someone came in, and they thought it might be a souvenir. And we, we figured out, and we'll be getting that.
I have, just, I'll send you an email, though, and just email Pepper after you turn around signs, if you try to get some floor.
Mayor?
Was there a resolution regarding a engineer's study on the ADA?
I thought it was supposed to be here, but I don't see it.
And, I mean, I thought it was, too.
Yeah, I want to see it.
Yeah, it didn't, the mayor, you came in too late, or?
No, she did it, because I double-checked with her, but I certainly, you can address it next week, I guess.
Yeah. I thought, I thought, I'm sorry, what? I didn't actually talk to Tiffany about it, it's not on-
Was it this, isn't this it?
No, it's a little bit interesting, I think.
Was it?
It wasn't here, but it'll definitely be on our next meeting.
Thank you.
So, you have to look forward to a request for a feasibility study for making city hall ADA compliant.
And he didn't tell me before the meeting, so it was assumed that it was-
Yeah. So, it won't be a surprise when you get it, I'm sure it'll be on the website tomorrow tomorrow, I'll look it up.
Do you know the cost?
I think it was thirty-
Thirty to forty thousand.
Heather pointed out that even if, even if there's prohibitions to change city hall into an ADA compliant building, that having the feasibility study done would enhance the market value of the building if we ended up selling it. So, that, these mayors aren't good right now, because it wouldn't be- So that piece may lose its degree now, because it wouldn't be money wasted if we don't do it. Public comments, about anything?
Hey, hi, Timothy O'Connell, first word. Two environmental concerns have come to the fore recently and the city knows of none of them, neither have encouraged gossiping here. Maybe they will after this. The first is the runoff from the school, the middle school. And that's, that was an old problem, decades old problem. And how the, in the Capitol project, how they decided to deal with that was to build new expensive infrastructure elsewhere. Now both are already, but I've been talking to superintendent somewhere about it for the last two weeks. Lots of emails back and forth, she sent Mr. Keeler out there today. So she's interested and she's being a good supporter of it. But this is city property, I should think that the city would keep an eye on it so far nobody has. You've got a conservation advisory council, I recommend that you advise them, maybe they'll look into it. I shouldn't be doing.
Doctor Rob Perry?
Doctor Rob Perry, wow. Anyway. The second issue is that on September sixth, the Coleruso company got its freshwater wetlands permit from the state. Now, about thirty people, none from the city unfortunately. Maybe Ken's advocates, he was on the copy list for an address, city attorney. What, is there, is there an address for the city attorney?
There is, usually it goes to city hall and it gets handed over.
And you haven't seen that, okay. Well, that was on the sixth and it was responses to the comments. The state, the state got it wrong in two thousand ten when it issued, well, two thousand nine it issued a freshwater wetlands permit. This was challenged by Senior Hudson in two thousand ten when there was a freshwater wetlands appeals board in the D C. That was a great thing to have, it's now gone. So there's nobody to go to anymore for an appeal. However, Senior Hudson was in its rights, now you've got another freshwater wetlands permit built on the last one and it's even worse. It's, it's, they've inverted a hierarchy of laws. So at the bottom of all of the, of all of the permit stand, the laws governing the permit standards, the last step you get to is mitigations and it's kind of like a state on the pig. So what the, what the, D C did is said, they said, oh, great, they're gonna mitigate, fine, they can have their road. So there's like a quit pro quo, which, which is fine, but the quit pro quo is supposed to be the last thing in the process. The first thing is supposed to be a look at alternatives. And I wrote in my comments, I wrote thirty-one pages of comments, that the city has adopted a preferred alternative in L W R P. It's a part of our local law. They didn't even look at, the state just ignored it, the word alternative does not appear in the comments. Now, we're being rolled, we're being bulldozed, pushed back constantly on this. I, I would hope, certainly is the job of legislative entity to, to come up with some kind of, it could be your job to put, to have pushed back. I think there's some room for legislation here. For instance, if we define the causeway, what a causeway is, in terms of what New York state law already says. I, I would hope that the county council gets to that as soon as possible, sooner than later, because we're getting rolled.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
I'm Verdi Smith with Ward. I just wanted to call attention to some very serious traffic problems that are ongoing in the fifth ward. I've reached out to my alderman, Dominic Torante, and he and Eileen put together a ward a block, ward block meeting, ward meeting for Thursday. And I'd encourage, isn't it Thursday, Wednesday? That's right, that's right, Wednesday, because Thursday's election.
Six o'clock.
So Wednesday, six o'clock at Crosswinds. And while this is meant, you know, primarily as a ward meeting that many of us have asked for to meet with our representatives to stress our extreme and ongoing concerns about traffic and accidents in our ward, obviously that affects people in other wards as well. Primarily the issue are, is with cars that speed from Fairview through the boulevards, hitting recently an elderly woman, a couple of days later a cat. Last year, a cat, killed a cat right before that. I've reached out to my supervisor in the past, he claims, you know, traffic laws are governed by the state, there's nothing to be done. We've all in this neighborhood gotten a runaround and it's a very, very heavily residential neighborhood. A lot of elderly people, a lot of children, a lot of pets in the streets. And a lot of cars just zooming through, you know, from Fairview as a shortcut. And they'll pop out into the third ward, so I'd encourage, encourage third ward constituents who are concerned to also come. But this is an issue that's, you know, a citywide problem. I look forward to the meeting and I hope you guys can help publicize it. And we just need to get this in hand before somebody is killed, because it's gone on for way too long. And there has to be something to be done. The police always cite staffing as an issue, but it just is the case that that ward is very under policed. You know, there's a very lack of police presence relative to other parts of the city. I get it, there's scheduling problems and perceived needs elsewhere, but you know, someone's gonna be killed if this doesn't get addressed soon. A lot of animals already have been killed in the few years that I've lived there.
So it's mainly Glenwood, correct?
Um, Glenwood is the main place where there have been, yeah, I mean, I've seen several animals and recently the elderly neighbor hit by car recently. And a lot of us walk our pets there, a lot of kids play in that street. But people do drive down Oakwood as well, you know, one street beyond that, yeah. But Glenwood is the prime speed zone, because you can zoom from Fairview right past the park and just down, you know, it's just a shortcut. Instead of going all the way along Fairview to Green Street. So it's a major problem, something has to be done. You know, we've talked about speed bumps, but anyway, Eileen and Dominic, I appreciate you guys setting up a meeting. And I'd love for any input and thoughts about this from everyone else on the council, because we're gonna make sure people in the ward have the presence at the next police committee meeting as well. And just keep the pressure on until this gets resolved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a Lyndon Muslin for the ward. I have a couple of things, traffic issues, three hundred block of Columbia was torn up, two weeks ago. Trmitted, I would imagine, to the Coleruso heavy trucks that roll past that particular area. They're gonna be digging up in front of T S L, I think tomorrow when it starts, the same problem. Collapsing the roads, the, the heavy traffic from the wrecking trucks, as well as other trucks simply wrecking our cities. So whatever, I don't know what the lawsuits are and all that, but it's extremely expensive for us to keep sort of pushing this issue off and not getting these trucks out of our cities. That's, it's two issues about traffic. The next comment I have is I visited the daycare center today, this is part of the John L Edwards conversation. And I asked Carol Gans to come tonight, I believe. In the discussion of moving things around and the opportunity to collaborate with some of these services in one place, I don't want to dismiss the importance of the daycare center in this conversation. So just to bring that back up in terms of the city possibly putting that in John L Edwards or addressing the needs, because it's heavily used, they don't have enough room, and they are squeezed for space. Carol, you want to say something, you're, you're there.
Yeah, well, I can speak, I've been a resident of Hudson for forty-seven years, a taxpayer on the third and fifth wards, fifth and now third wards for thirty-seven years. Worked in the Hudson City School District for forty years, spent twenty-five of those years in and out of John L Edwards. And I've watched its development. We were really proud when we were there because it was the center of the community. It was a place where you could walk to, children and families could walk there. And it's adapted, obviously, for children. So I urge you to consider, I know, I mean, the rumor's been for twenty years that we're gonna sell John L Edwards school. You know, we want to do it and the county's interested in it, that you really think about what the city needs. We have so few services for youth. We have almost no vacant land in the town, that we really need to think about how we're going to economically retrofit that building for whatever you choose to move in there. There's also a lot of land associated with that. And we have talked about doing a nature center, a nature walk, a nature trail over the years. So I just wanna stick my two cents in there. The town of Kuk Saki has a Y W C A, we don't, we used to, we don't have one anymore. When I was over there, this, the youth department used the school at least four nights a week for basketball. I know, because I opened the door many times for them and.
This is at John L, right?
This is at John L. And, and really think, because this could be your last opportunity to really service the youth of Hudson.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say, as you know, we have been considering everything that you have been saying. And as far as collaboration with the county and the city, our main concern is that the youths are included. So I just want you to know that and meeting and working with the mayor as well on the issue.
Yes, Mayor?
Oh, yes, in addition to the potential J L A for the daycare center, we're also having, I've also had conversations with other alternatives. As you know, that the, recently the H Hudson Assembly Authority was awarded a large amount of money to build a new structure. So they will be in touch with you, it could be a brand new facility.
A lot of options available right now, because of whatever the mix going on. Terri?
Thanks, the superintendent gave an impression, I'm sure she didn't mean to give, that the Coleruso company has no other alternative to use city streets, which we know is not true. But as soon as they built that road up to the mine, they, they were ready to get the crossing permissions at the state roots. But they wanted more, they wanted a bigger road, they want to intensify operations, so they held out. And one of the things that they pretend is that it's a one-way road, the causeway, a one-way road. And it is not, it was zoned and we designed our zoning to accommodate that single lane as a two-way road. Unfortunately, one of the great, and I'll close with this, one of, this is potentially another legislative issue. One of, one of the great challenges to our city right now is that we have an assistant attorney who parrots that it is a one-way road. And this has just got to stop. We're being rolled and this guy's not even helping us, he's hurting us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, follow-up to my, what I said from that last time, of the, regarding the city cemetery. A few weeks ago, Pierre Young and I visited Oakwood Cemetery, Uncle Troy, which I recommend everyone to go visit. It is a beautiful cemetery, it has a beautiful chapel with tinted tiffany glass. And the, the Uncle Sam is actually buried there. So the reason why we went there is to compare what they've done, which is a twenty-seven year process of turning around their cemetery so that it is now a, a living, breathing, so to speak, part of the community. They do events every month, they have live tours, they have a daffodil brunch in the spring, where they do gala events there. And they have, they run a three-hundred acre cemetery, the board trustees and a three-hundred million dollar budget, all of which is zero taxpayer funded, so it is all privately donated. We have a smaller cemetery, which the taxpayers brought. So, but it's a lot of work and it's a lot of volunteers and it's, you know, it's putting up gravestones and cleaning them and, you know, by hand and washing them. So it's, it's work, they do it. So anyway, so we are continuing the conversation. I recently participated in a webinar to give more information about cemeteries. And just as a final plug is to say, Kelly from Spotty Dog is doing a tour of our cemetery the last Sunday of October, I'll remind people we're joined here in conjunction with the Hudson Area Library, where she gives a tour of the cemetery. She has, from the Evans family, the Evans family court, which, which you could say she has the keys to. And so it's a great tour and I, it's the Sunday right before Halloween, so it'll be perfect. And I had a recommendation to go and we have a really important historic cemetery. It's interesting to know and it's really about thinking of our cemetery as a park, as a sculpture garden, and as a part of it.
Which, how large is our cemetery?
I want to say seventy-six acres, and there's two different parts of it.
That's correct, that's just the measure, it's from the amount of acreage from rocks to the.
And we have, there's multiple options, other cemeteries have been very creative in the maintenance of their cemeteries. So I had a recommendation, anyone who's interested, after the tour, we're gonna plan like a, hopefully a friendly cemetery book for anyone who's interested in getting involved and it's a really good way to, you know, help foster yet another city park which is definitely utilized. And as well as hopefully to relate some of that burden here on the city.
That tour was very successful last year.
Right, yes, it's great, it's great, Kelly knows her stuff.
Okay. Want you to read that?
No, I have one last thing, just to the public. We mentioned this at the last meeting, being that the school J L A closed and the thirty Columbia opportunities was serving a Head Start program of four classrooms. And being that the school has closed, they need two classrooms. And they're, and they're, they have a literacy program as well, but the need for the Head Start program is crucial. I've seen many concerns of parents posting on social media that they're very upset that, you know, their kids have no place to go. And speaking, you know, with the former principal of, of J L A, you know, he was telling me that how crucial Head Start is for children, you know, if they enter kindergarten without that knowledge, it's going bad. And their future outcome is placing them for the most part in special ed, which is not very much helpful in their education. So if anybody has any information to move with a space someplace with and can relocate, please reach out to Tina Sharp from Columbia Opportunities.
I talked to Tina Sharp and it's very difficult, one reason is.
The requirements.
Right, the requirements, most places available require a build out that is beyond, you know, what's financially feasible. So, but if you can think of something, you know, by all means, contact Tina Sharp. It's a desperate situation and they don't have a lot to pay.
Yeah, right now, um.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
I'm slightly.
Their budget is between fifteen and eighteen hundred dollars a month. And they, but as Tiffany said, they need two classrooms.
Yeah. It was a total of four and they had, they need two classrooms.
Is that like they need the classrooms during school hours or like?
Yes, it'll be from eight-thirty to two-thirty, yeah.
Okay. That's why the regulations.
So as far as the requirements, like with the smoke detectors, where they are placed, you know, the exit doors and things like that. So the places that would have been helpful, you know, like St. Mary's, you know, it's already a school that's set up, but unfortunately they said their space is already taken and they could not give them any space. So we're still looking for it, you know, it's crucial, it's kids born every year and it's a part of their learning assessment, so it's very much needed.
What about the Columbia Green, is that, you brought the, to the park?
Yep, you know, when, when it was located within J L A, you know, it's walking distance for most parents and as well as the class, if they have Columbia opportunities, we're, we're working on a bus route.
One more comment, the appraisal didn't include the police station, the former police station and the code enforcement. I'm just curious, I thought it needed to sell property, we had to have some appraisal.
I think they may be all in.
So what's the time?
They don't, they, they were agreed to be sold two years ago. Voted on to be sold by the county council, so both those buildings, once code can go up for auction.
But we still want the appraisal to live in that, lawyer, was the lawyer?
Well, I think there, I know there were some discussions about the market value, particularly of the police stations.
Though I love it was part of, when you did that, you had to have that.
I think you need to have something in hand demonstrating what the value is. I think we may have that from the prior discussions about sales.
Didn't want to have, have postponed some more.
And I think part of it was also just to get a sense of square footage and value. So as the council works with the county, you get an idea of what values are and square footage needs are presently involved. They might need a new being so that we can fit it all together, so we're trying to stay happy.
Of course, if you're using the square footage paid for in the containment building now, I'm. Of course, if you use the square footage paid for in the building now on three hundred, three hundred block, it would be six hundred dollars a square foot. I don't know if you're aware, that's what was recently paid for a building on Orange Street. Pretty amazing. But anyway, also kind of irrelevant. Anyway, anything else?
Come on.
She's dead, Jack.
Okay, stay around to sign your resolutions, please.